Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Lakeport City Council for Tuesday, May 16th. Roll call.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Councilmember Barlett.
Here.
Councilmember Spur.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
And Mayor Matina.
Here. Mayor Proten, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready to begin.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for joining us tonight. If you have joined us to speak on a particular agenda item, please wait for that item to come up. Otherwise, there are citizen input forms if you want to speak to us about anything else. Next, we have acceptance of the agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda. First is waive the reading except by title of any ordinance. Approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting for May 2nd. Approve the warrant register of May 10th. Approve application 2017-021 with staff recommendations for the 10th Annual Cardboard and Duct Tape Regatta to be held July 4th. And approve the application WP 2017-002 with staff recommendations for the Grilling on the Green fundraiser in Westside Community Park to be held August 5th. And approve the proposed MOU between the city and the bi-coastal NorCal media to present the 2017, 2018, and 2019 summer concert series in Library Park. Anybody want to pull anything to discuss? Anyone from the public? Okay, we'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda. I'll say it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have citizen input. Do we have anything tonight? Anyone have anyone, anything they want to discuss? Next, we have a presentation by Susan Jen of the Health Leadership Network on the Lake County Wellness Roadmap project. I don't think-
Susan is on the road, so I guess you're, you can bump that, bump that back. She'll have to present when she goes.
Okay.
Can you do that?
Yep.
Sorry about that. We was hoping to get you outside. She's coming to a conference in Sacramento.
That's okay.
Sacramento.
Well, no, as soon as I said it, I realized I haven't seen her out there anywhere.
Thank you. She'll be here soon.
So is it okay with everyone if we just move forward and we'll come back to that? Okay.
Unless we're done.
Yeah, you never know. All right, we'll move on to council business. Community Development Director, Groundwater Sustainability Agency. Kevin?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, fellow members of council. Tonight's meeting is a follow-up to your January 17th, 2017 discussion on this topic and where you gave staff direction to begin the process of forming a groundwater sustainability agency for a portion of the Scotts Valley groundwater basin. Staff has prepared a draft resolution for the formation of the GSA together with a boundary map, which includes the entire city along with approximately 380 acres of unincorporated area just west of the city limits along primarily Scotts Valley and Riggs Road, where the city does supply some municipal water service along the laddles traveling from the city limits to our wells out at the Green Ranch. Additionally, the city has also begun to notify some interested stakeholders consistent with the Department of Water Resources' GSA formation criteria. We, I know there's some folks in the audience here. I've also spoke with a few folks over the phone, just kind of giving them a background on what the driver of this is. The primary driver is in 2014, the California Legislature passed the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act to regulate the state's groundwater. And as a part of that act, it delegated the Scotts Valley Basin as a medium priority basin where it would, I believe, by 2022, is that correct, David? By 2022, a groundwater sustainability plan would need to be, or called a GSP, would need to be put in place to kind of look at how to manage the groundwater in that area. The legislature also provided a deadline of June 30th of this year for agencies to decide whether or not they wanted to form a groundwater sustainability agency or a GSA. Initially, the city was working with the county in regards to forming a joint powers authority. The county has sort of decided to go in a different direction on that. They've submitted an alternative plan, which the primary purpose of that complicated, but the primary purpose of that alternative plan is to get the Scotts Valley Basin bumped out of being considered a medium priority basin and out of this criteria in general. But in the meantime, that's going to take a lot longer than, than the timeline for our ability as a city to declare a groundwater sustainability agency. So we're kind of doing this as kind of a placeholder item to kind of keep our foot in the door and make sure we retain our ability to have a say in the future of groundwater sustainability in the Scotts Valley Basin. So tonight, what we're kind of asking, it's an opportunity primarily to gain some public, an opportunity for the public to come and comment on the proposal, but also formally asking you guys to set a public hearing for your June 2nd meeting, to have a public hearing consistent with the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act provisions for the formation of a GSA. Very complicated issue. I'm sure there's lots of questions. I can try and answer some. David can try and answer some, and we'll do our best to answer all these questions.
Okay. Questions? We've been studying.
Good evening.
Anyone from the public?
The, the one thing that, that is abundantly clear to me is, is that the city needs to move forward on this because the county would be the default management agency that would take over if we didn't do this. And if their plan to get the alternative plan, which is to drop us from a higher or medium priority, doesn't go through, then they have nothing to lose. But we have everything to lose. We won't be at the table making decisions on behalf of our citizenry and all the people that we represent through the municipal water system. So it is imperative that we move forward with the deadline looming, you know, 45 days away. We need to do this whether or not the alternative plan that the county has goes through or not, because they have nothing to lose and we have everything to lose. So they, the entire situation that we are facing is that we must move forward, make sure we get the paperwork in order, and if the alternative plan goes through, then that's fine, that we don't have to worry about getting the GSP, which is the groundwater sustainability plan, in all of its intricacies. We can just devolve back to a low priority, which is not a big deal. But we need to do this, but the county doesn't. So this is why it's so important that we act on this, move forward with the GSA, get it approved, get all of the paperwork in order. And if the alternative plan goes through, then that's great. But if it doesn't, we need to be at the table to represent the people that we serve. So that's how I see this, microencapsulated, and Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, that's the difference between the county and us. They have nothing to lose by, by doing this, and not getting into a JPA with us doesn't hurt them because they would be the default agency anyway. So we're the ones that need to move on this.
And to further add to that, it's, it's not our, our intention is still to continue to work with the county-
Absolutely.
On, you know, on moving forward with this, ideally from our perspective through a joint powers agreement, but you know, by no means are we looking to operate independent. Again, we want to continue that, that communication with them in putting together a more comprehensive, you know, overview. The, the piece that we've carved out here is certainly not the entire Scotts Valley Basin, which is much larger.
Well, I see this as an opportunity for the people involved to come on June 2nd to voice their opinions and give us input. So I think it's a good thing.
It seems like something that we need to do just to cover our bases. Ideally, it would, we would no longer be, you know, the alternative plan would be accepted and we wouldn't be a medium level. But then if that wasn't successful, then according to the county's plan, we're not even a voting member, we're a non-voting member of an advisory committee rather than being a JPA or a cooperative agency.
That was the worry in our conversations, the most recent, if, if the alternative plan did not go through and the county was the administrator, at this point, the only thing we've been sort of guaranteed is a technical advisory position.
And so we won't know those until this deadline to file our own has-
Exactly.
Right.
Sheriff Martin?
Here's Brian Martin.
Brian Martin, just going to ask you.
So my, my questions are, I guess there's a whole bunch of questions. I just need to be educated on all this. What are the roles of a GSA? Do they set rates for water uses and restrict water use? I understand that it's only a 385 acre parcel. Is there going to be some time in the future down the road where there's deemed to be a sphere of influence outside of the 385 acres where people, because obviously it's a single aquifer that runs out there and serves not just that 385 acre parcel, but there's a lot of residents, homes, agriculture areas out there. Is, is this the type of thing that's going to lead to the installation or the identification of a sphere of influence for this aquifer and require the installation of water meters for residential and agricultural wells somewhere down the road? And that would be my concern, even for those outside the area of the, the 385 acres it's initially proposed.
Well, first of all, Kevin, isn't the 380, isn't that just the unincorporated? That does include the cities also along with that?
It would be, yeah, it'd be the city limits in addition. Yeah, the only, the 380 acres is the only portion of our proposal that would be outside of our city.
Right, but it's also the city.
It's also the city itself. So, did you want to?
Yes, Sheriff, I can comment on some of the, first of all, with respect to spheres of influence, it's not my understanding that a GSA is going to have a sphere of influence as we understand that term, which would apply to a city in the context of the local area, formation, commission, lap goes. The, the GSA, the GSAs need to cover the groundwater basins as those groundwater basins are delineated by the Department of Water Resources. So Bulletin 118, which you can find online, has a list and beautiful maps of all the groundwater basins in the state. And it's required that a GSA overlay all of those basins, whether it's one, two, multiple JPAs, in whatever capacity they, they happen to exist. With respect to the powers of a GSA, the main role for the GSA is to, is to create the groundwater sustainability plan. And it's, the point of the agency is to maintain the sustainable yield of the groundwater basin. And sustainable yield is a, it's kind of a new term that was developed with this statute, right? Because sustainable yield is different than safe yield, which is what most groundwater hydrologists deal with. So it's likely something more than just safe yield, it's sustainable yield, so that the groundwater basin isn't suffering from chronic depletion, which would lead to, you know, subsidence on the coast, seawater intrusion, stuff like that. So in order, once there's a plan in place, the plan is supposed to help guide the local community to figure out what they need to do in order to maintain that sustainable yield. And so groundwater sustainability agencies do have the power to levy fees on pumping to both pay for the, the plan and also to the extent that's necessary for any, any other regulation. They, they will have the power to permit wells, new well operations. They potentially could have powers to limit pumping if there was a finding that, that was necessary to maintain the sustainable yield. So groundwater sustainability agencies will have quite a bit of power, which previously only special water agencies have been provided in the past, so.
So my next question would be, what would be the jurisdiction? Is it just within the GSA's delineated boundaries, or is that power going to extend out?
No, so it's going to be with respect to the boundaries. So the boundaries that, that we've got in the, in the, in the agenda packet, which Kevin prompted up, that is the extent of the GSA that the city is considering creating. So outside of that, potentially, it would be the county's GSA, and the county would have the power to do those things as well. However, all those things have to operate within the context of the plan, and the plan needs to cover the entire basin. So the, the law requires that all the groundwater sustainability agencies coordinate their efforts to create a groundwater sustainability plan or plans, so that they're all using the same data, right? So that they're basically, everybody's on the same page with respect to, to the basin itself. And so this also would apply to the, the big-
The Big Valley.
Big Valley. It's also a medium priority groundwater basin located, holding within the county. So the county there, to the extent the alternative plan isn't approved, they would have that power, those powers over there, separate, apart from what, what we're doing here.
Okay. So we're willing to work with the county because of the-
Coordination.
There's two entities. Oh, sorry, yeah.
The way that the DWR, that the meeting that I attended, it seemed that because there was a lot of overlying bases and the aquifers extend over boundaries and there's all kinds of different things, the feeling is, is that, that a lot of this is going to be a work in progress and that the sustainability is the ultimate thing. And I've told you and other people that I think it's about 50 years overdue, but there needs to be some work moving forward, but there's a lot of question marks and different types of legal things and water law. I guess it's really complicated and difficult. So as far as someone slapping, you know, meters on stuff like that, I think that's going to be a way down the road. There's going to be a lot of litigation and very litigious situations in different counties down the valley that overlap. It could be a really ugly situation. So I would sit tight and I wouldn't get too excited about it, but everyone realizes that's involved in this, that we're heavily vested in sustainability.
Well, like you guys, I don't want to sit tight too long and find out what happened.
Right, absolutely. You need to be proactive.
I want to make sure that I am informed and how those other people out there have the same questions. Thank you. Appreciate the answers.
And Madam Mayor, regardless, I mean, the, the GSPs that would be developed as part of these plans, those will be public processes as well. I mean, there'll, there'll be, you know, additional opportunity for, you know, the public to partake in those, in those processes.
Well, and I think the public is going to get excited because they're going to feel like they're losing property rights that they've had control over their well and maybe won't have that same control later, and we haven't gotten to that point yet. So Brian, I'm sure you'll be back then with everyone else lined up. We want to use our own water, but most people that buy property and have a well, that's one of the main reasons they're doing it. And so this whole process hasn't gotten to that yet. I think last time we talked about it, septic, they looked at, the state looked at redoing septic systems, and that fell apart before it even got started because the freeway backed up so far for one meeting that, that, nothing's happened since because people were so upset. So not sure how this is going to go later, but we're dealing what we have to now. Glad you're paying attention. Any other questions? Anyone else from the public?
Madam Mayor, there's no further comment. I would move to set a public hearing for June 2nd, 2017 to consider the formation of a groundwater sustainability agency for the area within the Scotts Valley Basin that is within the city service area and direct staff prepare a legal notification of said public hearing consistent with the provisions outlining the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. Also under Sigma.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Shall we back up now to our presentation? So now we have Susan Jen.
Hello.
Welcome.
Sorry that I'm running a little late. I'm getting on the meeting and chilled a little later than we thought.
That's okay.
So you have a copy of this?
Yes.
I just wanted to go over this a bit with you so that you have a chance to kind of take a quick walkthrough, and I really appreciate you making time for me on your meeting schedule. So this has been a culmination of effort that's been transpiring over a period of time, trying to take a look at our county health ranking as well as our county health needs assessment, and being able to put that into a document that could kind of create a framework for taking action. We came to this through a strategic planning process that had most, all of the organizations, all, it had all of the service organizations represented, and then many of the other stakeholders as well. And that process was part of identifying the impact areas, the areas that were thought to really be able to make a difference in looking at our county health ranking. As many of you know, our ranking has been low as many years as they've been doing the ranking. And so why we wanted to put this together was, as you can see here in the vision statement, it says that the Wellness Roadmap lays out an encompassing and mobilizing framework to align purpose, priorities, partnership policy, and measurable action to increase positive health outcomes in Lake County. So it's kind of a, it is an encompassing vision, and the framework is really a means to be able to galvanize action. So there's a lot of activity that is taking place in our community, a lot of wonderful work that's being done. One of the things that we've been talking about is how we can actually pull this, all of this work that's being done together, so that it might be aligned and therefore have greater impact. And that things could be mutually reinforcing, and we could scale up the efforts if we could align efforts and really be able to focus on what we think would make a difference. We have a community that is really good at collaboration, but in order for us to make the shift, the level of shift that we're really looking at, it's going to take a lot of people pulling in the same direction at the same time. And so that's what this framework is intended to do. And while the framework is based on statistics, the significant thing is not really trying to move up on a ranking scale. It's really trying to increase opportunities for people to have quality of life in our community, because these statistics are people. And so that's really what this is about, because I know we are a caring community. People care about one another, and so this is a way to vibrant, thriving, resilient Lake County, as you can see here on the inside page. So going over this a little bit, you see we have a table of content, so you can find which you might be interested in. We try to highlight key messages on the footer of each page, so that if a person didn't want to read through this word for word, they could still pick up a great deal of the information by just reading through those bottom notations. And you can see here, like when we get into page six and seven, one of the issues that we're facing, it is probably the significant issue that we're facing in our ranking, is premature death, which means people are not living to age 75. They are dying sooner than age 75. So oftentimes, when people look at our statistics, they think, well, it's because we have a larger proportion of older people in our community, but actually, that is not the reason. These numbers are age-adjusted, for one, but number two, we have people that just aren't getting to even age 75. And so for, let's say, somebody commits suicide at a young age, if they're a teenager, all of those years that are lost between, you know, maybe they're 14 or 15 and then age 75, those are all lost years. And that goes into creating our premature death figure. So that's really the issue, and in fact, Robert Wood Johnson contracts with the University of Wisconsin to do these rankings for every county in the United States. And part of our working with Robert Wood Johnson around looking at our statistics and developing this roadmap, they're very interested in the work that we're doing, was that they have seen that this premature death issue is really a fundamental issue that we have to address if we're going to make some of the inroads that we'd like to see happen in shifting our community more toward wellness. So on page eight, you can see, we did spatial mapping of all of our health statistics, and we put those into maps, actually, that you could look at the different areas around the county. But what we did for purposes of this report was we made bar graphs of those maps. So you can take a look, community by community, and see where your most challenges are. So take a look at page eight, and you've got the various communities listed out here, and the bar graphs tell you where you've got the highest premature death rates in the coming. And then the chart below that is intended to kind of break this information out by age. So if you were looking at strategies and how you might want to make an impact in these different communities, these are the age groups where you might want to put your focus. And then you can see here the major causes of death in Lake County, that's on the page nine. Typically, these are, you know, things that are up there in terms of causes of death across the country. So we have heart disease, we have cancers, we have COPD, we have unintentional injury and accidents, which is really quite high in our community, and we have stroke. But the interesting thing about this is that many of these things are preventable. So if we were looking at, you know, how to do, how to put, how to become more strategic, I guess would be the best way to say it, about making an impact on the well-being in our community, we have a lot of hope here because a lot of these conditions are preventable. On the next page, kind of shows you the economic burden of disease. You'll see some of these same factors coming into play here in this pie chart. You can see the cost for these diseases, and that these diseases here are accounting for these six conditions are counting for over half of our costs. So a lot of people are looking at, you know, how much is this actually taking a cost in terms of money, and this gives you some sense of that. And you can see here that investments in public health actually have a very good return on investment. Then the next page, you can see conditions that influence health. So when you take a look at the weight of these issues that go into the county health ranking, you'll see that socioeconomic factors are weighted at 40%, so that's actually the highest weight in the ranking. But if you look at the rank, we're 47 out of California's, 58 counties there, 57 counties participate in the ranking because one is so small. But if you look at the health behaviors, which account for 30% of our health profile, you'll see that our ranking is much lower. So if we're trying to do something around making an impact, we would want to try to get to those health behaviors. And again, the health behaviors are directly related to many of the things that are preventable in those conditions. And then the page 12 just kind of shows that there was kind of a rationale for how we were looking at this model for change, and it reinforces the fact that we've tried to combine our county health needs assessment along with our county health ranking in terms of how we're looking at this roadmap. And then you see the wheel, which gives you the impact areas. There are eight of them. And these are the impact areas that also come through the county health ranking and our priority recommendations from our county health needs assessment. our priority recommendations from our county health needs assessment. And then if you just take a look at page 14 and 15, I'm just going to use this as an example of the impact areas. What we've tried to do in each one of the impact areas is take a look at the measures that we can collect. These are measures that we can currently get the data. We've compared Lake County to California averages, we've set out the objectives in each one of these areas, we've looked at potential policies that could support this particular impact area, what we can do and what's working. And then you'll see that there's a snapshot again of our graph that shows you where the areas are that have the highest rates of whatever the particular impact areas, in this case, we're looking at substance use. And that's been done for each one of those areas. And then, I'm not going to go over each one of the impact areas because that's certainly something that you can take a look at and I don't want to take up all your time in that way, but I did want to take a look at page...
Thirty-three, isn't it?
Thirty-three. Okay. So you can see here that we have tried to look at some next steps. The significant thing on page 33 is policies that work. These bulleted, this bulleted list are things that if you look at policy actions related to them, they have evidence-based for actually being able to make an impact in the communities where these things are implemented. And then, if you take a look at this collaborative action plan, this comes right from Robert Wood Johnson. They're doing the rankings and this is a suggested way that communities can work together in order to be able to make the level of impact that would be needed to try to make some adjustments in the profile. But once again, I really don't want to focus on trying to get a higher ranking. The rankings are actually very close to one another. So, the county that comes the closest to us in terms of if we were to compare population is Tahima. And if you look at that county, you would notice that, you know, some of the things are, you know, ranked higher than they are for us, but the differences are not tremendous. I mean, it's not like thousands of people more. We've got a small population size and that is a plus and a minus. You know, the plus size is that if we start making some impacts, we can see changes. The minus size is just that we have a small population sample that we're, that we're looking at. But one of the things that came up, we had a meeting on Thursday where we tried to look at the impact areas and things that we might be able to do in our community. And you can see here on page 35 that we have an action checklist. And one of the things that came out was convening town hall events. Now, I, the meeting that I was just at all day today was a meeting where they were talking about trauma-informed practice and what different counties are doing around the northern region. And believe it or not, Redding had a town hall around ACE factors where they had 450 people attend. And so, if we were to try to really look at utilizing town halls around creating a platform for input and the things that, that the communities might see would be impactful for them in terms of how we might be able to make some shifting in our statistics toward wellness. And I'm talking about statistics, but again, I'm really talking about people's quality of life. We have a beautiful, a beautiful community. It's one of the most beautiful places that we could live in the state of California. So the question is posed at the very beginning of this document, why is the health of and well-being of our community not on par with the beautiful environment that we enjoy? And what's creating that mismatch? So, this is an effort to try to just put information in one place so that it's very easy to reference. And you'll see here on page 36, there are just some parting thoughts. A lot of, you know, that's why in the vision, there's a lot of language around alignment and common purpose and pulling in the same direction. Because even though we may be very collaborative in how we do our work and we're a cooperative bunch of people, if we're not pulling in the same direction around a few key items and if we are unable to measure the things that we're trying to do, then we can't tell the impact that we're making. And so, it was brought up in some of our conversations that maybe what we need to think about is actually a county-wide strategic action plan. And what would that look like? What would you want the outcomes of that to look like? And who would participate in that? And how would you get input for that? That could be something that town halls might be a part of. And how would you measure whatever you were going to look at through that plan? And how would you keep it going in perpetuity? And one of the things that comes up all the time is communication. When we were, you know, kind of doing the background research for this document, we discovered 25 different collaborations just around health and wellness. So, how do those collaborations know what one another is doing? And unless you can go to 40 meetings a month, there's, it's impossible to know that. So how do we create structures that enable us to have that kind of cross-communication across these different entities that inform our work and allow us to keep each other in the loop on what it is that we're prioritizing and the things that we're doing so we can pull in the same direction and we can at least be on the same road to where we're trying to go? And then the other thing is this grassroots participation and that would be another way that town halls could be, you know, informative. Because I've heard it said, and, and we would not be unique in this way, that we have a lot of grass top participation in what we do. We don't have such grass root participation in what we do. And what we need is the full blade, you know, we need the full grass. And so, how do we get more of our community interested in, in these things that we're, you know, after all, this is about our community, that's what this is all about. And what would make this attractive and appealing to, to our community? And then you'll see on page 40, we've been keeping a dashboard over the last few years and you can see where we've been going up and down and what kind of trends we have and where we've been just kind of staying the same. Wherever you see red, that's not a good direction even if it's going up and wherever you see green, that is a good direction even if it's going down. And wherever you see yellow, that means that we're just staying the same. And then I just wanted to draw your attention to next page, which is the exposure to adverse childhood experiences. And now they're not only looking at adverse childhood experiences, but what they're calling adverse community experiences. So, for instance, an example of that would be an ad, something that might result from adverse childhood experiences may be homelessness. But how that would look in an adverse community experience would be lack of housing and a lack of transitional housing and affordable housing where people might be able to find a place to live. So, there's a lot of research that's being done around social determinants of health. ACE factors are one of those social determinants of health. And as you can see from this chart, if you look at health conditions, the more ACE factors you have, the more risks you have for these different health conditions. And in fact, you know, one of the things that they're discovering, they've known with young children that this has, that ACE exposures have an influence on their brain development. But what they're finding now is for instance, just something like the vagus nerve, it's one of the 12 cranial nerves, it travels through the area of heart, it goes down into the GI area, it affects immunity, it affects GI issues. These are things that even though we look at ACE factors and they say, "Well, you know, nicotine is an antidepressant, so people pick up smoking as a way for them to deal with some of the issues that are unresolved." But it's more than just picking up that behavior, it's the fact that you actually have your nervous system responding in different ways and, and chemical reactions happening throughout your body that are responsive to the environments that we find ourselves in. So, I wanted you to just take a look at that, you'll see the map. We actually tried to look at ACE prevalence, this was probably about six years ago in our county. We had a pretty good representative, a representative sample around the lake, but we had about 500 surveys returned, which is a pretty good survey sample, but we'd like to redo this. So you can see the darker area of this map is where again you have higher prevalence. The original ACE research that was done out of Kaiser Permanente in San Diego and that was just middle-class America, there were 68% of the people that were going and using San, Kaiser that had at least one ACE factor. And when we did this in Lake County, we had 82% of our, of the people who took the surveys. And then you can also see on the next page, the map of the mortality. So, this document is not perfected yet. As we made our first batch of copies, we realized that there were still some errors here and there, so you'll see little red dots in your book where it shows you where we found an error. And then you've got a sheet in the back that explains those errors. So, the next print we do will correct the errors and we won't have to have the errata sheet, but you can see where we found some mistakes that we thought we had caught in the, I don't know, 100 times we went through reading it, but... This is really just a platform for people to start taking action. So if a person wanted to take a look at, you know, let's say food and say, "We just really want to drill down on, on food and access to healthy food." Maybe it would be a good idea to put together a coalition around that. You already have several organizations that are trying to address that need, but maybe you would want to just drill down on that and say, "This is the issue we're really going to try to make an impact in." Or any one of them, or you could choose more than one. But this is just a platform upon which to build and it's my hope that this will not be the only time this is done. This is the only time this kind of a document has been done in our county and I'm hoping that it will be something that we can continue to build on. As we look at what we can do locally, these measures in here are measures that are coming through our, through the state and through the region. If we could begin to think of how we could look at measures that would feed up into those areas, so some measure around food that we could do locally. There is a hunger task force, there are people who, you know, periodically look at the hunger needs in our community. But if there was something that we said, "This is the thing we'd really like to drill down on and we're going to measure this one thing to see how we're doing," then that makes this really come to life, makes it very actionable. And that could happen regardless of whatever the impact area is. And if you had all of those 10 organizations around the same table that would be talking about that one thing, then you might be able to see some real traction coming and we would have real-time local data. And it is not that we lack data in this community, it just doesn't see the light of day. We have a lot of data that's being collected in many different places, data that has to be sent for reports, data that has to be sent for different reasons. It just never gets put into a central location where people can look at it and actually use it to inform their work. So if there was, you know, something that you could really drill down on and say, "This is something that we could measure," without it being onerous on people, we might be able to really set some benchmarks and see the progress that's being made in our community. So, I just put this out as informational and I would be happy to, you know, work with anybody that's interested and I'm, I'm interested in the town hall approach and how we might be able to make some impact through town halls. This is not, this may be information that is familiar with all of you, but I don't think it's information that the general public probably has, you know, a real general idea about. So, a way to be able to inform them and bring them into our work so that we're strengthening our community that way. Any questions?
Do you have electronic version of this?
I am going to put it on the county website.
Okay, because we'll link it to ours if you have.
Good, good, I appreciate that. Once we get all the errors corrected, we're going to put it on the county, county website so it'll be accessible to people.
So the question that I have is, I, I think I saw you put one of these on when I was on the Center Foundation Board maybe 15 years ago and it was pretty much the same song, first verse, and now we're here again. But one of the things that occurs to me, being in the grocery business all my life and hearing talk about food all the time and healthy diet, and I would, I would question that you could get five doctors from different areas that they could even tell you what a healthy diet was. And what really pains me more than anything in the world is the WIC program which pumps out billions of gallons of soda pop-like juices and tons of worthless cereals that they give away for free once you become a mother and it goes on for two or three years. The government is doing this and I know it's under pressure from big food. We are up to 130 pounds of sugar a year. Much of that is from cereal and from soda pop and from the juices that they give to these poor little defenseless kids that don't have any other choice. And you know, Minute Maid orange juice, 44 carbohydrates, 11 cubes of pure sugar. And they're saying, "Oh, fruit juice, it's got to be better than Coca-Cola." And then on the other hand, we've been preaching low-fat diet since the mid-'70s, meat consumption's down 38%, chicken consumption's up 133%. So we're telling all these people what's supposed to be healthy, but they're getting such mixed messages. Nobody knows what the truth is and where do you go? Well, if you go to corporate or you go to the state, if you go to the breadbasket, they're going to tell you, "Corn's great because that's what the senators and the Congress need to sell to state offices." This is way too complicated to just start saying, "Let's go after food, let's have more healthy stuff." You want to get a kid to eat a broccoli when he can have a Twinkie? This is a battle, this is tough. We were here 15 years ago and I don't think anything's changed. We've been in the bottom 55, 56. And another thing is socioeconomic. When you're in prison, they feed you potatoes and rice and bread and bologna because they can't afford to give you beef and pork and chicken and lamb. And it's the same thing, if you look at the map, Lucerne, Clear Lake, all these poor places where they're on food stamps getting foods. And another thing before I get off of it, they just allowed energy drinks, once they changed the label from nutritional, from whatever it was before, you can buy a $5 Red Bull on food stamps. Now, if that isn't criminal because of the food business, got into the legislature and said, "This is healthy." Really? When you could buy a bag of oranges or five pounds of potatoes, we got some serious problems upstairs and maybe we need to go after those programs before we start trying to fix things down here in Little Lake County when they're feeding these people garbage when they're little kids?
Well, I think you bring up a very good point and we have been at it a long time. And that, one of the things is, why I brought up the topic is how we structure ourselves for alignment. So, if we have, you know, doctors that have a lot of different opinions, then maybe there needs to be some kind of a platform for bringing them together and having a discussion around this topic. I mean, at one time, we had 25 different parent education curricula that were being promoted in the county. So, a person went to one program and they got this curriculum, they were told this thing, they went someplace else, they were told a whole different set of messages. They went someplace else, they were told a whole different set of messages. We were able to bring one curriculum into practice. It took a while, as you're saying, these things don't, if they were easy, they would be done. So, but what you're talking about is political action, and maybe that would be something that a group of people could carve out and say, these are things that we really want to, one or two things that we really want, sugar consumption is an issue across the board. So maybe that's the issue. We want to drill down on sugar consumption. We're going to look at it from a political lens. We're going to look at it in a, you know, a practical lens in terms of our community education. We're going to look at it from different angles, and we're going to try to get people on the same page about it, because that is one of the things that is necessary to create a paradigm shift. If you look at the Robert Wood Johnson website, that was one of the things that was jumped right off to me of the page when I was looking at, because they're trying to create a culture of health. They're trying to create a cultural shift. So the number one thing that has to happen is people have to have the same opinions, mindset, values. If we're trying to, you know, get people to do certain things and they don't value at all the thing that we're trying to get them to do, they're never going to do it. So this is the reason why it takes a community effort to try to talk through these things. Where can we find agreement? Where can we find alignment? If sugar consumption is an issue and we want to try to address that in every pocket we can, then how do we align ourselves to do that? And how do we do this at a political level? How do we do this at, you know, a service level? How do we do this at the general consumer level? These are, this is what this is designed to do. You brought up just what I would hope to have somebody looking at this and saying, you know, we've been at this for a long time. And when we started doing this, you know, all those years ago, there weren't very many people that were really even looking at our health statistics. They would look at them and put that thing on a shelf, and there wasn't any concerted effort to really try to make a difference. So what you're describing is a way that a difference could be made, but it would definitely take mobilizing action around that, because, you know, it is true, when people get mixed messages about things, that's just confusing, no matter where the messages are coming from. So, other questions?
What are your next steps? Do you do the reports or do you help facilitate another step to this?
Well, I would be willing to, you know, my next step, my personal next step is to try to figure out how to get some town halls going around this and to engage people in, you know, people who would be in leadership, decision-making, to be a part of that effort and to draw people into just getting information about what's going on. But as you look through this roadmap, you'll see that that Upper Lake to Clear Lake Oaks area is a high-risk area, as Ken pointed out. I'd really like to be able to drill down in that area. And I don't know, you know, what the priority would be or, you know, I did write for a little grant to try to get into that area, but, you know, there were 400 letters of intent for that grant, and they're only going to award six, so I'm not hanging my hat on it.
Right.
But I would, you know, I just want to, I want to be able to make an impact in the areas that this is talking about. So that area is a place where I'd really like to put some strategic thought into how to make an impact over there. And I'm very interested in making citizens involved, because, you know, I think we need to function as a team, those of us that are, you know, doing this kind of work and trying to do systems issues and programs, and the people who are, would be the recipients of those things. We need to be on the same team and working together around this. So I'm interested in thinking about how to be effective at doing that.
So much as policy decisions, you talk about healthy food, you know, they have the Dollar General and the Niece, the Arlen Supervisor over on our district wants to put another one in Lucerne, three miles away. They carry no meat of any kind that I know of, except frozen, no vegetables, and they have one in the Oaks. And I mean, it's like they're, here they are in a low-income, socially challenged area, and they're providing the lowest-cost beverage junk food of every shape and kind, and the community is not necessarily in favor of it, but some of the people that are in charge think that it's something that the people need, especially when they're only three miles apart, you know, and it's kind of, those are the kind of policy decisions, it's like, what do you want your community to look like? And I think the people in Kelseyville and Middletown have spoken out against it, maybe because of the economics of it, but there's a lot more to it than that, because providing more, you know, $10-for-a-dollar ramen noodles and cereals that are 99 cents a box, that are, you know, 80% carbohydrates, whether they're sugar-coated or not, is not helping the problem. And trying to fill everybody's shopping cart with low-cost garbage with it being overfed and undernourished is not going to help the problem. But some of the people, as I said, they don't know what they don't know about health, and it's just because you put something in your mouth, whether it's a potato or rice or, you know, a loaf of white bread, doesn't mean that it's necessarily going to get you anywhere. It's just low-quality fuel. And I think that the biggest problem is people don't know what a quote-unquote "healthy diet" is, and neither do most doctors, as far as, you know, clinically speaking, calorie per clap, calories. Their nutrition courses are pretty weak.
Well, and it's a multi-multi-billion-dollar industry.
That's the biggest problem.
To try to sell different diets to people, you know, what's going to work and what isn't going to work. But I think you hit on something, and many things, but one of the things that resonates for me is, that's one of the reasons why I put forth that concept of a common strategic planning process. We don't have a shared vision for what we want our community to look like. And so, you know, when you're talking about this district is doing this thing and this district is doing that thing, what do we really want our community to look like? And without being able to answer that question, then people just spin off in a whole bunch of different directions. So, you know, that's one of the reasons why I very much believe in people and believe in, if you just get the people in the room where they can talk together, things will happen that you could never have predicted, but you have to get the people to be able to be talking together. And so as long as we're in our little orbits, then we can't create that common vision and what we really want to see for our community. And I think many people have aspirations, you know, noble aspirations for our community. How do we bring this to the fore and move it forward? I don't want to go into a community and say, this is my vision for you. I want a community to be able to express what they see would be something that they would want to strive to attain. And, but I think that unless we can define some of those things, we're just, you know, you're just shooting in the dark a lot of the time, hoping that whatever, you know, it's kind of like, I don't want to make this sound negative, but, you know, it's kind of like hoping you get a Picasso or a Van Gogh by just splattering paint on the wall. And so I think we have been more thoughtful, and I think we have a myriad of good programs, so I don't want to make it, you know, seem like that's the way we are doing our work. But some things, I think when it comes to thinking together about how we can be most effective and strategic, we haven't really done that kind of thinking together. You may do it here on your council, and perhaps, you know, Lakeport does, I mean, Clear Lake does it, and other entities are doing it, but how do you get all of that to come together to get the impact you'd like to see? So, anyway, I appreciate your comments and your time, and I'm, like I said, I'm very interested in learning more about how we can engage our citizens, doing some town hall work, and doing some of this bigger thinking together as well.
Thank you, Susan. Very informative, the report. It's really beautiful, too. Okay, next, we're going to talk about a new mural on Main Street. Kevin?
Good evening again, council. The Lakeport Main Street Association, most specifically the Main Street Design Committee, has been working on a comprehensive mural plan for the downtown area, kind of evaluating the potential to locate several murals in the downtown area. They're currently working with a willing property owner in Mr. Roy Mulhouser in regards to his building located on the southeast corner of Main and Third Streets. The proposed mural design consists of a shoreline view from Lakeport, looking out towards Mount Canuck Die with a ferry to the city of Lakeport and a sailboat upon the lake. The artist will be Gloria de la Cruz, who's painted a couple other murals here in the Lake County area, including, I think the one I'm most familiar with is the one that's on the side of the Clear Lake Oaks Water Company, Water Tanks that sit right next to Highway 20 as you enter into Clear Lake Oaks. The Main Street Association has drafted an agreement with the property owner for kind of long-term maintenance, but we're bringing this here to you this evening for a couple different reasons. One, our ordinance and municipal code really don't have a framework in place at the moment for review and approval of murals. Some communities have specific art councils that look at these things, others review these projects through their sign ordinance. So staff is kind of requesting kind of a multifaceted discussion here. One is kind of just on murals in general, also on this specific mural and location, and then just thoughts on how we want to deal with these in the future, and then staff can come back with maybe some more specific provisions on dealing with that, because we definitely, our general plan wants to promote art in public places. Study after study shows that art in public places contributes to placemaking, and they're very strong features in economic development. They have many positive effects to the community's well-being. So just kind of multifaceted on that. But you do have the specific design being proposed at this location in front of you, and we're just kind of interested in getting the council's thoughts.
Great. Questions, comments?
Well, we also have the one in Lucerne at Harbor Village Park. They had a really beautiful rendition of the castle down over there, and the gal that does that is extremely talented, and I think, when I think about these murals, we had another one on a hotel, I think that was finally demolished or something, that was over there, but I think they do really add, and your research on art in public places along, like when we have this, the, those quilt trails, all of those things just add to the festivity and the feeling of, you know, hang out, and I think it's just a great idea, and I love it. And they seem to be holding up really, really well. They've been there for a very long time, so it's not something that, you know, the first drought ends and suddenly the murals are gone. It's not like that at all, but I think it's a great idea, and I love the design that she's got here.
Very pretty.
Is it just me, or am I missing, is Lakeport Ferry, is that one a thing?
No.
Oh, okay. I thought maybe the same.
Yeah, I know, everyone will make fun of it. It's a beautiful ferry, if only we had one, yeah.
Well, we used to.
Two years ago, yeah. So it's kind of two things. You can approve this if this is what you, you know, want to approve, but then you can also direct us to come back with, when you do a little bit more research as to what would be the best vehicle in the future to approve murals and where we would place it in our zoning.
Given that we know a comprehensive mural plan is coming, maybe we should consider options for how that system will interface with council. That would be a good idea, since this is probably not going to be the last one.
Correct. This makes for more, you know, coming, so it would be.
I'm really concerned that we've had at least two council members, maybe more, wondering what the thing was, and so maybe we should question whether or not that should be there at all, other than maybe having a regular-type sailboat rather than something that comes out of history, and maybe Lily Langtree's supposed to be on board or whatever, but nobody even knows who she is, and they've never seen this before. So I don't know that, I mean, I love everything except that little, you know, I'm expecting Captain Nemo and maybe Lily Langtree to be on board there, but I don't know if that's appropriate for 2017.
So maybe something along the lines of easily recognizable Lakeport icons or images.
Right.
But I really like her work.
But at the same time, it, you know, we don't want to be critical of art.
We had a discussion earlier about First Amendment right of expression, so when you do come up with the criteria, subject matter is going to be very difficult to address because of, you know, because of that.
And I'm not saying I want to limit the ferry, I just want to know the story, so when everybody asks me, what is that anyway?
It's going to be with your CTA thing, you know.
Yeah, I got to be up on it.
Well, and, you know, how do we pick the artists or pick the art? And how would that work?
Yeah, it's going to be a little tricky.
There are ways to develop design criteria, but maintaining, you know, the understanding that this is First Amendment protected speech, and so the city can only put restrictions related to the time, place, and manner of the art, not to the actual content of the art.
It would be helpful also within that policy if we had ways to encourage art instead of just a regulatory system.
Okay, so, today we're approving a concept.
I had a hard time with that, with the language. I mean, you guys do have the near ability, you know, this is kind of what David and Margaret and I talked about today, is that you, without the existence of this framework currently in municipal ordinance, you guys have the ability to look over this and approve this tonight. But we also, knowing that, you know, it's a stated goal, we've been working on, LIDAC has, you know, spoken on this issue quite a bit, and, you know, we know that the LMSA is working towards this. So just kind of getting your guys' preferences and thoughts about how mechanisms, we can come back with some recommendations on how to handle this in the future.
And when you say approve this, so are you saying we're approving this proof for the side of the building in that location?
Yeah, kind of, I mean, yeah, just the, well.
Yeah, kind of.
Well, the criteria, you can approve it based on the criteria that David just.
Right, I mean, we can't restrict the actual content of the image, but we could say, I don't think that's a good place for it. I think it's too big, I think it's too small. Those types of things are within the city's power to regulate.
It's a very pretty mural, and it's awesome that the Main Street Association is working on getting art displays throughout the town. That's been something I've hoped to see for quite a while, so, yeah, it's great.
And it's also important just to differentiate that this is, this is considered a fine art mural, this is not a commercial speech advertisement, which would fall under our, the rules under our sign clearly.
And tonight, we don't have anyone from Main Street for the artist here, right?
So the owner's going to take down a sign on that side of the building so they can put the mural up?
I believe the sign's already taken note.
Yeah, that picture that I have there is an older picture showing the signature sign. That sign is resurfaced.
The trust is.
Yeah, we need to get that little truck through there.
I have a question real quick on the content of the art. You've got to figure at some point the artist is being paid to come out and paint this portrait on the side of the building, correct?
Through the Main Street Association.
Right, so the Main Street, so if I were to commission George to paint something for me, I want you to paint this for my wall at my house, and he goes, well, I'm going to put a nice Mickey Mouse right here, and I'm going to go, no, I don't want Mickey Mouse, because I'm paying you for your work. This isn't for, this isn't a venue for you to have artistic expression, I am paying you for a service.
Yeah, and you could choose as the person.
Would it be the same kind of?
No, because the point here is the government.
The government's involved.
You're not going to go make your own stuff.
See, we have the council, it's the government's fault.
Right, so this is a, this is a mural on private property that's being paid for by non-city, but non-city revenue.
Right.
And so the only, so the city doesn't have a say in the content of that art. If the city were commissioning a piece of art... If the city were purchasing a piece of art and paying for it with public funds, then it would have much more latitude with respect to what it wanted. But we're talking about private art on a private building, and we just, the city has the ability to regulate the time, place, and manner of that presentation, because it affects the aesthetics of the city in general, just like it does, just like it has power over people or land use. So that's the distinction. But yeah, if you want to hire George and.
So careful.
Pay him from painting Mickey Mouse, that's fine, as long as it's on your private property.
Right.
And it applies with all required mural regulations and sign code ordinances.
Anyone from the public?
Sorry.
Come on up.
So in this theory, the Main Street Association could.
Hang on, Councilman Barnes?
I get to say something nice about my hometown of Fresno, which is like putting lipstick on a pig, but they actually have a mural district, which was in a fairly blighted area of town, and over the past several years, they have really done a great job transforming it, but it is kind of challenging for local governments, because you're right, it's private property and all that. So if you're looking for ideas on what to do on the next thing, I would look to Fresno as a model, and specifically, there's a couple issues, actually, in terms of creativity. There's Civil Code 987, because these are works of the mind, so the artist could conceivably assert copyright over it, even though it's up on a public wall, the artist can still copyright it or not. There has to be a contractual agreement with the property owner, so that's Civil Code 987. And what the city of Fresno does, apparently, is for those aesthetic things, they let the Fresno Arts Council kind of massage the murals as they're coming online. Some of the murals have been fairly controversial in Fresno. So what they did to get the city out of the, you know, the arbiter of taste, they let the Fresno Arts Council, which is a nonprofit, kind of handle the mural applications, and kind of decide what's going to go. And I don't really know the underlying regulations that the city has to do that, but that's kind of the arrangement. There's this understanding that there's a mural district, there's been some fantastic work done in there, they really have done a good job kind of transforming the look of that particular neighborhood, and Fresno Arts Council does have, fresnoartscouncil.org/resources/muralguidelines is a two-page guideline sheet on all the particular issues that they go through. So, I love the design, but if you're wondering to know where to go from here, I might suggest Fresno as one model you could look at.
That's great.
Appreciate that, and we're going to look for some of those, yeah.
Anyone else? Councilmember Barnes, you had another question?
No. No. No.
You asked and answered. Is there anything we want to know, though?
Oh, just that it would be the Main Street Association would have the ability to ask for the artwork to be modified.
Okay. Is there somebody else over here?
No, but there's a town up in Vancouver Island that does murals, and that's their main tourist thing, and they go from building to building to check out the murals, and there's always people that are taking pictures and stuff like that. I think this is a good idea to do this, and I'm for it. Even Williams, they have that big mural there on that one block that's really nice, and people stop to take pictures. I think it's a good thing.
Okay, so, do we want to look at our.
Do we have the concept?
Just a motion, or do we want to add to that?
I'd suggest that you kind of, you could approve the mural, and then direct staff to look at your potential design guidelines for future mural projects.
So moved.
So seconded.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kevin. Good plan. Is that the last of the business? No, one more thing. Nominate council member, so it's voting delegate to the League of California Cities Annual Conference. Kelly?
Yes, so, as you are aware, this is an annual item. Every year at the League of California Cities Annual Conference, there's a business meeting held, where league members vote on resolutions that establish league policy. So the city council is recommended that they nominate a voting delegate to vote at that business meeting. This year, the conference is taking place September 13th through 15th in Sacramento. So you will, I guess, first need to determine who's going, and then appoint a voting delegate, and they also recommend a first alternate and a second alternate.
And the items that you'll be voting on at the conference will come to the city council ahead of time, so we'll be having another meeting discussing what those are and the direction the council wants on the items, usually it's just a couple items. It's been one before, just one before, so, but that'll come back to the council.
And even if you're not a voting delegate, you can go to that last meeting and listen to it.
So exciting.
It is pretty good.
I agree.
It's all the work that's been done for the entire year. So is everyone planning to go?
I probably, I probably will not, because I'm going to be on vacation that week.
It's a great way to spend the vacation.
Sacramento.
The day is.
Everyone else going?
I'm sure one of the big leagues.
There's someone that wants to, yeah. Councilmember Turner, do you want to be our voting member this time?
It's Friday afternoon.
It's, yeah.
Usually, before, it's one of the last things before we cut out.
They usually have lunch, I'm trying to think, usually it's over about maybe one or two.
Yeah. Okay. And what do we need, two alternates?
Just one alternate.
One alternate?
Well, they ask for two.
Did they ask for two? I'm sorry.
Who would like to be alternate?
I would like to have Tim and Stacy be the alternates, because I might have to cut out early, because I have catering the next day. But I want to go.
You should.
Any comments from the public? They must approve. Okay, take a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to nominate Councilmember Turner as the voting delegate, and Councilmember Barnes as the first alternate, and Mayor Matina as the second alternate for voting delegates in the League of California Cities Annual Conference to be held in September 13th, 15th through the 15th, 2017, in Sacramento, California.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Communications. Margaret?
I just want to remind everybody again that we're going to have the ribbon cutting for downtown at the Margaret Parade, so please let me know what council members will feel to be there or not. And I will not be able to be there, my daughter's graduating from college that weekend, so I will be out of town. So, yeah, just didn't realize it until later, but anyway, yeah.
Are you sure you want to do it, then, or do you want to?
I think it's probably the most, we have so many people downtown during that parade, and it's, everything's done now, so I thought it would just be an appropriate time to do that, so as long as council is there, that's, you know, most important, be cutting, doing the ribbon cutting, so.
Okay, I can be there. Who else is in town?
Not me.
I'll have a seat.
I'll be here.
I'll be in a float.
On what?
That I can do the ribbon cutting, and run to the float.
They go back to the float, yeah.
What time is the ribbon cutting?
Well, the parade starts at 11, so it'll be right at the front of the parade, probably when Brad's usually at the front of the parade in the police car, so it'll be, you know, right at the very beginning, and so we'll do it right at the corner by the announcer stand, that way they can do some announcing about it.
So we'll cut the ribbon and then have the parade go through?
Yeah, the parade go through, yes, as the ribbon's cut, yeah.
Like a rope line.
Yeah, rope line. So, anyway, okay, we'll overcome that.
David?
Just, I went to the League City Trade Conference, as I mentioned last time, it was very informative. Got a little refresher on reviewing contracts, so they're exciting.
Much contract. Thank you. Doug?
No report.
Nick?
Yeah, I just wanted to take this opportunity to remind council of a special meeting for the budget workshop, June 5th at 5:00.
Monday night?
Do we have that on our calendar?
No, we just, no, it's not a reminder, it's actually. Actually, it's 5:30. Make sure everybody has time. Is 5:00 okay for you? Okay.
June 5th at 5? Okay, whatever, Nick.
Thank you, Nick.
Chief?
No report tonight, thanks.
Kevin?
No report tonight.
Kelly?
No report? Councilmembers, sir?
No report.
Councilmember Carlat?
No report.
Are you sure? As long as it's not about food. Councilmember Barnes?
No report.
Nothing, nothing. I was just going to mention one thing from Area Planning Commission, the widening of 29 is still on, but it's now $61 million, and there is a significant shortfall.
$20 million.
Of 20 million. So, this was the first meeting where they looked a little nervous. I just thought I'd pass that on. Cross your fingers. Okay, thanks for joining us. Meeting adjourned.
Anything you want to tell us?